Good evening and welcome to the March 7th, 2024 Meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer Bloomington residents appointed by the City Council. Tonight we have six, which is a quorum. The Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Our work is informed by the city's comprehensive plan, various district plans, and the city code. For some items, the Council, the Commission makes a recommendation with the City Council having the final decision-making authority. We have one item of that nature on the agenda. In other cases, the Planning Commission can approve or deny an application subject to appeal to the City Council, and there are none on tonight's agenda. For each action item, there will be a staff report, an opportunity for the applicant to present, then time for any member of the public to provide testimony. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item tonight is a public hearing. It's a privately initiated city code amendment, and Senior Planner Centenario has the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, good evening. Item one is a privately initiated city code amendment to allow congregate living facilities as an interim use in the I-2 limited industry zoning district. So, very technical title to your, on your agenda, but we'll, we'll detail what's, what's being proposed. So first off, the proposed city code amendment only applies to land that is zoned I-2, limited industry. And the map on the screen here is a map of all of the I-2 property within the city of We are right here, right now. The city hall is a property that's zoned I-2, and it's, the vast majority of this is kind of located in this more or less central, centralized industrial area within the city. There's a couple parcels, or a few parcels in the northwest along Interstate 494 that are also zoned I-2, but by and large, this zoning code amendment would apply to this general area. So included the definition of congregate living facility. This is, this is taken right from the code, where essentially it's a type of housing, common dining spaces, recreational facilities, food service. And then, you know, there's a second sentence, what a, what a congregate facility is not. And you can see that is bed and breakfast, resorts, vacation homes, et cetera, et cetera. From a, from a nuts-and-volts perspective on what would have to happen to the code to allow a congregate living facility as an interim use is fairly straightforward. This is a, just a graphic from the proposed ordinance, and you can see, under the congregate living heading, you have a city-licensed facility serving five or more persons. You know, that's, that's the use category that we're talking about here. And right now, currently, there's nothing in the I-2 box, meaning that it's prohibited. What's being proposed by Hennepin County, the applicant, is to simply put an "I" there to allow it as an interim, interim use. So, it's really important to clarify that this really would be a two-step process if, if there is to be a congregate living facility in the I-2 district. First off, the first step is what we're doing here, reviewing a city code amendment to allow this use as an interim, as an interim use. That would change the city code. The second step would be for someone, presumably Hennepin County, to apply for an interim use permit. So it's, it's a two-step process. Any action by the Commission tonight, or any action by the City Council for this application isn't approving any congregate living facilities. It's really focused on amending the city code to allow the, someone the opportunity to apply for a facility in the I-2 district. That said, there, there is of course a site that was the impetus for this application, and it's the existing Holiday Inn Hotel on 94th and 35W. So this is zoned I-2, and has, the Hennepin County has been leasing this hotel since 2020. Exactly how the, how it has been used has evolved over the last several years, but it, the county wishes to continue to have a facility, a congregate living facility at this location, hence the, the city code amendment that you're considering tonight. Now, as a, from a staff perspective, we don't think this is a great site for a congregate living facility, as we outlined in the staff report. There is some transit along 94th Street, but it is, it doesn't really connect to a lot. It's really a Bloomington-based route. There is a lot of industrial uses in, in this area. There's a lot of traffic, and this is an interstate interchange, so on and off ramps. It is quite busy. Really isn't much in, in way of pedestrian improvements. Recreational facilities are sparse, and I think it's about a mile, a mile to a grocery store. So not an ideal location for a congregate living facility. That said, again, we often have to weigh competing interests, but the comprehensive plan, which is the city's overall guiding document, and what we look, look to when considering these types of city code amendments. And the, the comprehensive plan is, is pretty explicit, frankly, on what a, an adopted strategy is for this type of concern. And that is to support efforts to address homelessness. Local, regional partners, you know, the Hennepin County, the applicant, fits, fits pretty, very well into what we believe is a adopted strategy by the city of Bloomington related to assisting with homelessness. And that's the primary reason why staff is supporting the code amendment tonight. Should the code amendment be adopted by the City Council, then again, the next step would be for the county to apply for an interim use permit. But there are performance standards associated with congregate living facilities, and I just have a portion of those standards up on screen. A management plan would be required. You received a couple of letters from adjacent property owners expressing their concerns with how the facility has, has operated, and concerns about the impact to their, to their staff, or to their property, or to the folks that are living in this facility. And the management plan would hopefully address a lot of those concerns. Certainly, there'd be a lot of impact or involvement with the police department, with property owners, and with, with the applicant. There's also compliance with other items. You know, real general, a lot of the city code relates to how a site is being used or operated, and it, it deals with trash, with landscaping, parking, and lighting. All, all those things are elements that we would be considering if we were to review interim use permit for a congregate living facility. There are also interim use permit findings of fact, and interim use is key here. It is not meant to delay permanent development, and we have other areas of the city where there's interim use permits, where they've existed for quite some time. But going back to the feedback you received from property owners, if I had to summarize their concerns, it really focuses on, in our mind, findings four and six. Whether or not they used to be injurious to the surrounding neighborhood, harm, public health, safety, and welfare, and that the property has no enforcement orders or nuisance characteristics. That's where, that's interpreting the commentary from property owners, I feel like that is where essentially a generalization of what the concerns are, and something that, if the code is adopted, we would, we would spend a tremendous amount of effort trying to address those concerns. With that, we are recommending approval, and I have a recommended motion on the screen.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Centenario, I have a question about the terminology used as interim. Can you define interim? Is there a length of time that would qualify it as interim versus conditional versus permanent?
Absolutely. That's a great question. Thank you, Commissioner. So interim, as it was suggested, is temporary, and interim use permit is, would be approving a use up to five years. Now, folks can reapply for a new interim use permit, but the maximum period of time that can be approved with an interim use permit is a five-year period. A conditional use, it runs with the land. So if a conditional use is established for a property, it stays with the property. Doesn't stay with a business, doesn't stay with an individual, it's use-based, and it stays with the property. So let's say a restaurant is approved through a conditional use. The business can change, the restaurant can change, it's still a restaurant, and a conditional use permit would still apply.
Related to that question, and I'm, the first part is probably pretty, basically the second part, I probably should have thought about it ahead of time a little more, but are there general parts of the city where we allow interim uses versus not?
Sure. A great question, Commissioner, or Chair. The interim uses have shrunk over time. They're, they used to be called temporary conditional use permits, and then the terminology changed to interim use permits. There are still a few uses. We established a pandemic-related interim use a couple of years ago. There, you know, the most, I would say, widely-used interim use is remote airport parking, and that is limited to, you know, a very confined, a very confined area. And Plan Manager Mark Agard, I'm, I'm trying to think of other interim uses in the city that are still intact, and I, I don't, I can't think of that. One was related to exterior storage, and that interim use has been removed.
And are there, in our experience, when we have had interim uses, again, this is where I should have asked for a little more homework on my own end, do those interim uses generally run for a limited period of time, or do we typically see them brought back for renewal?
Chair Roman, apart from remote airport parking, yes, the, the intent is for them to eventually terminate and either establish a permanent development, or, you know, some, change something. And that's why there are a lot of the interim use permits that were in place, they've, they've run out of time and have terminated. There's really not that many anymore.
Okay. Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Centenario, you said the maximum was five years. Is the City Council discretion of less than five years?
Commissioner, I believe they do. You know, they, generally speaking, the Council has to take action on what's being proposed, but then they also, I think then, can approve a, a different timeline. Look to Glenn, if you agree with that.
Yes, Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, an applicant could apply for any term, as long as it does not exceed five years. If they wish to exceed five years, they would need to apply for a variance in addition to the interim use permit, but five years is the, the maximum. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Has the city considered or looked at what other sites would potentially have, that this use could actually be used at?
Sure.
Like industrial buildings, are there, I mean, what other hotels are in the area, or is this the only site?
Chair Roman, Commissioner Curry, we did, and we believe that this code amendment is quite narrowly tailored for this site. You know, there are quite a few multiple-tenant industrial buildings or properties within this area, and frankly, we just didn't see any sites that would be suitable, based on the characteristics of industrial uses. You know, a lot of the, just improvements you would associate with a residential situation, residential use.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions, if I may. The first question is around the current use, well, the hotel. Can you talk about hotels in an I-2 district? Is that legally non-conforming, or is that allowed? What is the current state of the property?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Commissioner, it is legally non-conforming. A hotel could not be built on a different property. This is, this hotel's been there for a while, and so we've, you know, city code has evolved and changed over the decades, and existing uses have legal non-conforming status. So this, you know, this, this is the only hotel in the I-2 district, and frankly, I think in the only hotel in any industrial district. So yeah, that's really the current status.
Okay. Second question, if I may, thank you. I vaguely remember, you talked about the comp plan, and I vaguely remember there was some language in the comp plan about protected industrial uses and protecting our industrial base within the city. Can you talk a little bit about that and how it lines up with, with this I-2 district?
Sure. Chair Roman, Commissioner, you know, the, the cur, the property that's, you know, the impetus for this application is not an industrial use. So the, if a facility were to be operated on the site, there would be no loss of industrial uses, but also speak, that's also related to Commissioner Curry's question about what other sites might be suitable, and really didn't feel like there were any. So if you recall, there was a code amendment related to schools that ultimately was not supported, and we, we felt one of the reasons for that was there were a lot of buildings or sites that could be opportunities for schools that are currently industrially zoned and used properties. So we felt that that was an instance where there could be an erosion of the industrial use base within the city and would be in conflict with that land use policy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Centenario, so the hotel is legally non-conforming today. If its use were to change to a congregate living facility, could it go back to being a hotel, or since they've changed their use and they're non-conforming, they could not go back?
Commissioner Cookton, that's a really good question. I, I don't know the answer to that. Did you hear what the question was, Glenn?
I did. Yes, Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, I want to verify one thing in the code and maybe circle back to that question.
Thank you. Were there questions for staff? Commissioner Curry.
Just, I guess, what would, what would just happen to this hotel if this was not approved? Does the hotel go on indefinitely under its current situation, or is there a time limit on how long it would be able to operate in this way?
Commissioners? Yeah, the, you know, the county, to their credit, is trying to go through the appropriate steps to make it an approved facility. It's been operating since 2020, and then there's just been a tremendous need, so it hasn't stopped. You know, the, ultimately, if this is an approved, you know, we try to work with the county on, on what the city could do to perhaps find other sites. But, you know, what would happen to the site if the facility were to close? It could, you know, it could hypothetically go back to a hotel. It could be sold, it could change hands, it could be redeveloped for some other use. It's really hard to say.
Okay, so just, I guess the, the point of the question was to understand how long it would be able to operate in this, for this use, specifically.
Commissioners, I'm not sure I could answer it. You know, we certainly wouldn't be, I guess we wouldn't be in a hurry to close a facility. We'd really try to work with the community and the city and the county to try and do whatever we can to address the issue of it not being compliant with city code.
Thank you.
As Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, following up on your question, so the use is listed as a conditional use, but it's for hotels in existence prior to, and there's a date in 2019, which this is in existence prior to. So today, it's a conditional use, but once that use ceases, certainly for a period of more than 12 months, they would not be able to reestablish that use without an additional code amendment that would potentially allow hotels in that district.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Did the city also look at efforts, instead of changing this to an interim use, to actually rezoning the property to, to a district other than I-2?
Commissioner Roman, or Chair Roman, Commissioner, we didn't. Rezoning it would have to have been accompanied by a comprehensive guide plan amendment, or the la, the future land use designation, to something other than industrial. And then we, we get in the, a very, a broader discussion on the appropriateness of a land use guide plan change, whether it to be residential or high-density residential land use. And, you know, just off the cuff, I'm, I'm not sure that we'd be able to find that that was a prudent thing to do.
And Chair Roman, Commissioner Goldsman, to add on to that a little bit, this area is like universally zoned I-2, and then I-3 across the freeway, so universally zoned industrial. Potential district to establish congregate living would be a residential, multifamily residential district. We would view that as a spot zoning, simply because it would be surrounded by other industrial zones, and also not, for the reasons Mr. Centenario discussed in the presentation, would not be a good spot for permanent residential.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Can you revisit the, you mentioned the charter, I think it was a charter school application that Hoyt Properties initiated. Can you revisit what you had said about that again, and why that was not approved, or how that might be different here?
Sure. Well, Chair Roman, Commissioners, the, I would say the most significant difference between the schools' code amendment application, this one, is that the comprehensive plan is very specific about how, about a housing strategy. And so that, that's very clear guidance from the plan on how we should consider an amendment like this. And conversely, converting industrial uses to school, schools, is in conflict with the policy to try and retain and limit erosion of industrial properties. There's also considerations about, you know, the number of, of children that might be occupying industrial use, where there are tenants, multiple tenants, some heavy industrial uses could hypothetically be right next to a school. So we've, we felt that there was significant land use conflicts as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Roman, Commissioners. My name is Spencer Agnew. I'm the county's real estate manager. Some of my other colleagues are here as well. And thank you, Mr. Centenario, for your, your summary of application. I'll provide an overview and then invite one of my colleagues to speak to the, the need, but I'll kind of address the, the rationale for our application and the basis of that. Essentially, we're kind of asking for your, and the city's support in our efforts to address an urgent and growing need for shelter for homeless families. And then specifically, as Mr. Centenario described, tonight, we're requesting the first of, we hope, what we hope will be a two-step process. First, to request an amendment to the city zoning code to allow the congregate living facilities as an interim use in the I-2 district. And then if that's approved tonight, and by your council, we would then return with an interim use permit application. At that time, dive into many of the specific concerns that have been addressed by staff. I understand by a couple surrounding property owners at that time, as we pursue an application for a tempor, an interim use permit. As was mentioned, the specific property of concern is a hotel located at 1201 West 94th Street, previously a Holiday Inn. The county has recently leased that property, as staff mentioned, beginning in 2020, for the provision of temporary pandemic response shelter for people at high medical risk for, for COVID during the pandemic. And that property did provide a really important tool in our response to the, to the pandemic. As that has wound down, we're now experiencing a kind of a new rapidly growing need, which is family homelessness, and we're seeking to enter into a two-year lease with the property owner to provide family, shelter for families experiencing homelessness. As has been described, the, the property is currently zoned I-2, limited industry, guided as community commercial. Congregate living facilities are not currently allowed in that district, but a number of other non-indus, non-industrial uses are. Such things as hotels existing prior to 2019, work-live units, social service distributive, distribution facilities, and temporary pandemic service facilities, among a number of other non-industrial uses. So we believe that the addition of the congregate, congregate living facilities as an eligible interim use in that district would be congruent with other uses already allowed in that district. Currently, the city code only allows congregate living facilities as conditional uses in a lim, limited number of zoning districts, primarily multifamily residential districts. And we certainly understand the rationale for that as it pertains to a permanent congregate living facility. In our experience, those types of districts aren't practical for a temporary facility for a number of reasons. The market cost of type, those types of properties, the lack of vacancy. For example, we'd be unlikely to buy an existing apartment building to convert it to a shelter. You'd have to relocate all the other, all the existing tenants, which would be counterproductive and likely too expensive to be, to be feasible. In our experience, trying to find kind of any place we can address this need across the county, these types of districts are often most feasible districts with larger light industrial hotel institutional-type properties, more likely to have vacancies in the current market, more readily adaptable on a short-term basis to the urgent need. Again, that'd be impractical to construct a new facility to address a temporary need. Might take two years to do so, in which case, the need may have come and gone. So we believe that the amendment proposed would kind of build in some prudent flexibility by giving the ci, the city the ability to consider applications for temporary interim congregate use facilities in additional areas of the city where it may make sense. The amendment we proposed would limit that only to interim or temporary facilities, as described, no more than five years. We're currently contemplating a lease of, of two years. So it would not, it would be, it would not contradict the city's industrial policy or result in a long-term loss of industrial land, in the specific case of the property we're looking at is already a non-industrial use, but should you receive an application for another property, it would only be for a temporary basis, when a result of a, a net loss of industrial property in the long term. And it wouldn't expand the areas of the city where this type of facility is allowed on a permanent basis, only on an interim basis. And as you know, the city would retain the ability to consider all of those potential applications on a case-by-case basis, establish relevant conditions, approve or deny each one, would not establish kind of new as-of-right areas where this type of facility is allowed. We believe this is consistent with many of the high-level values and goals established in the, the Bloomington comp plan, as well as the city strategic plan, as staff noted in the staff report. Some of those values that we share include placing a high value on equity, making sure all people feel welcome, safe, and supported, providing equitable access to opportunity, and addressing issues of injustice for historically marginalized communities in Bloomington. As I said, those are all values the county shares and that we feel are enacted in this specific project, by providing equitable access to temporary shelter for families experiencing homelessness who often come from the most marginalized communities. So with that, we'd be glad to answer any questions, but if I may, Mr. Chair, invite my colleague, Mr. David Hewitt, who's the county's Director of Housing Stability, up to speak to the, the need for this project.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Roman, Commissioners. As you've heard, my name's David Hewitt. I'm the Director of Housing Stability at Hennepin County, and I lead our efforts to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring. If I may, take a second to set this effort in those broader contexts. When we talk- in those broader contexts, when we talk about making homelessness rare, our job is to prevent homelessness wherever possible. Examples of which include, we have been allocating the recently developed sales tax to financial assistance at Housing Court for all Hennepin County low-income families to receive legal representation and financial assistance when facing eviction to help them stay in their homes whenever they can. Another example would be the recently launched Schools to Housing Program, working with Bloomington Schools, through which we have support services and rental assistance available for families in the school system, again, with the goal of keeping them in their home. For those that are currently experiencing homelessness or fall into homelessness, our goal is to make homelessness brief. We are the largest funder of homeless shelters in the state of Minnesota, including the state of Minnesota. But our actual focus in this area is to help families and individuals exit homelessness, exit shelter as quickly as possible to permanent housing. So while we do have on any given night some 2,400 men, women, and children in shelter in our community, we also saw more than 2,000 people last year exit homelessness to permanent housing through our efforts and those of our nonprofit partners. And on making homelessness non-recurring, we leverage more than $100 million each year towards services and operations of permanent supportive housing and supportive housing for more than 15,000 Hennepin County residents who have exited homelessness or other challenging circumstances and now need those supports ongoing to thrive in their housing. With regards to family homelessness, Hennepin County is unique in the state of Minnesota. Indeed, I believe we are one of a handful of communities, perhaps four in the entire country, that as a matter of policy says we will not allow children to sleep outside. Often referred to as a shelter-all policy for families with children, it's been in place as a matter of county board direction since 2005. What this means in practice is that when families with children would sleep outside and shelter capacity is unavailable, we as Hennepin County work with our partners to expand capacity to accommodate those families with children during their homelessness crisis for the extent of their homelessness crisis. During the pandemic, we actually had historic low numbers of families with children seeking shelter. Our standard year-round capacity in Minneapolis is 115 rooms across people serving people in Haven Housing. And at times during the pandemic, we were at 50, 60 families. Those shelters were largely empty. We attribute that to the eviction moratorium and the availability of federal emergency rental assistance during that period. We are able to attribute it to those measures because as soon as they went away in early 2022, we saw a surge in demand for family shelter. That, just as evictions, we expected a spike. In actual fact, what we saw is a swell that kept going all the way through to the end of last year. We have seen continual high demand from families with children needing shelter ever since early 2022, bringing us to the point that at the end of last year, we were supporting 491 private rooms, 410% of our normal year-round capacity, of which 173 are in the site that we are, by extension and acknowledging the two-phase process, discussing here today. Turning to that site, I want to note that we do have this history of working in partnership with Bloomington City and Bloomington Police, Bloomington Schools through these years. I will say that as a provider in these sites, and I know it's been acknowledged by various entities over the years, we are different to other arrangements that we know happened during the pandemic. And I want to call out a few of the features, and we also have our Security Division Manager contracted partners and others over the operations here for more detailed questions, if there are any. But within Hennepin County operations, we do provide 24/7 security. We do manage through that security cameras outside. We do have, in addition to security, onsite staff to support the families with their basic needs while they are in the shelter system and to help them get connected to services and benefits. We do provide three meals a day plus snacks and hygiene products and other basic needs. We do have a code of conduct. It is an expectation that families participating in our programs also have responsibilities. That code of conduct is provided in multiple languages. We do proactively engage the police and communicate with them continuously throughout. And we do continually look to improve the services we're providing in partnership with other impacted government entities such as, in this case, Bloomington Schools. And first and foremost, going back to a point I made earlier, we focus on helping families exit these situations as quickly as possible. It is not our intent that any family live in a homeless shelter setting for longer than necessary. You've already heard that the intent with this project overall is that it be temporary. Our goal for every single family that needs to use a shelter, whether it be here or elsewhere in Hennepin County, is that that use is as brief as possible. In the last 30 days, 75 families have exited homeless shelters to other destinations through our efforts. And I know in the materials provided, you saw letters provided by three of our nonprofit partners who do rapid rehousing work. What that means is for families in shelter, they assist them in identifying private rented market properties, in applying for them, in covering the initial costs, and they provide partial rent subsidies for a period to help them get stabilized there. And these entities have been helping hundreds of families in the last year move on from shelter settings to permanent housing. So this is really viewed by us as a temporary crisis stop, again, to stop children sleeping outside while we help families connect onwards. With regards to the requests here today, sadly, despite those efforts, the demand is continuing. I won't go into detail here, but we have seen some signs at the beginning of this year of the eviction wave receding. We have seen our efforts there, helping a lot more folks stay in their housing than would have done otherwise. We see some reasons for positivity, not least that we invested an extra $2 million in extra rapid rehousing last year in response to this crisis. And my team hired up an additional 12 social workers to do nothing but housing-focused case management with families in the shelter system to help them get out. So we are trying to pull all of those kind of rare, brief, non-recurring levers to get us out of this crisis. But as you've heard, we are seeking this two-year extension as we try to navigate it and make sure that children don't sleep outside during it. And I think that's everything that I feel like I need to say, but obviously can take any questions. And like I say, we have an incredible team here that can chip in with details.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Can you tell me, what is the average stay for a family at a property like this?
Casting a glance over to Trish Thacker, Senior Department Administrator of Well-Being. Do you have a ballpark figure?
Go ahead and come on up.
Commissioners, thanks so much for hearing us today. It's actually a pretty broad spectrum. An average would be hard and actually inaccurate. An average would be something around eight months. There are some folks that stay in self-resolve within several weeks, and there are some folks that stay significantly longer. But that's about, that's the mean.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hewitt, I do have a question. I think you're the right person to ask. You had talked about some security measures, code of conduct, just so I'm clear, because I'm not sure the total history of this. Have those been in place since you all took over the property, or is that what you're planning on doing moving forward?
Thank you, Commissioner. We do have our Security Division Manager who can give more details, but the code of conduct has been in place throughout and indeed was established during the pandemic period when we were serving a different population of, as you heard, medically fragile single adults. No, that has been in place throughout. It's something we take very seriously. It's part of our weekly check-ins with our guests as well.
Follow-up question, maybe I'm not clear on that. So there's been a change in your population at this facility?
Thank you, Commissioner. So during the pandemic, when we first entered into an arrangement with this hotel, it was part of a separate and different effort, which was a different crisis. We had a lot of people aged 60 and above. Indeed, I remember the week before the declaration of emergency, realizing it was about 101 that night, who were people in congregate shelter who were aged 60 and above, and therefore, as we were learning in the kind of emerging pandemic, were at the highest medical risk of very serious medical complications. So we had potentially a very challenging situation of people who are very high risk from a very contagious new pandemic in an enclosed congregate environment where they were sharing space with a lot of other people. So the risk of transmission was very high, and the risk to them, if transmission occurred, was very high. So in that environment, we worked with this site and other hotel sites across the county to move everybody that was aged 60 and above or who had the other medical conditions the CDC warned about out of congregate settings and into individual private rooms to bring their level of risk down. We believe that measure saved lives. As you've already heard me say about kind of, this isn't our intent for anyone long term, once vaccination was widely available during the pandemic, we brought in a similar model of social workers doing housing-focused case management to help people exit this site and others to permanent housing. And we were able to bring the numbers down and actually exit the hotel altogether and exit hotels altogether for that purpose. And one crisis following another, as has been the case the last few years, as I was saying, as we kind of came out of the pandemic health crisis, we then entered into this new crisis with the eviction moratorium ending and emergency rental assistance ending, where it was no longer those older single adults with the high medical risks that we needed to adapt our system for, but rather a surge in demand from families with children for whom we had no other option. So we have, of course, made adaptations around things like code of conduct and service models to cater for a different population. But that is who we are serving now and who we have been serving in this site for the last almost two years.
You mentioned that there are factors that are leading, I'm trying to get my head around, nobody can predict when the numbers will stay elevated or return to somewhat historical norms. And you indicated some factors around eviction moratorium and whatnot. Do the services you provide at this facility or other facilities, are those also to people who, I'll choose my words carefully, maybe recent arrivals who've been relocated willingly or unwillingly by another state government?
Thank you, Chair Roman Commissioners, for the question. The first thing that I will say about our family homeless response system is, and I bring it back to that principle of no child sleep outside, we apply that policy irrespective of what crisis brings that family with children to that point of needing shelter. So irrespective of whether they have arrived from other communities, we apply that policy that no child sleeps outside. We have the same kind of basic set of services, of course, around meals, basic needs, supporting people while in shelter. And our goal for all families is to help them move on and into housing. I think it is absolutely fair to say that we have some more complicated cases, that we are still working out how to develop service models around it. It's part of the reason we've been standing up extra staffing capacity. And you heard Trish Thacker talk to some of those, kind of, we have some very short stays and some longer stays, and that depends varying on the barriers that families face. So we are continually building our service model to meet needs, including those more challenging cases and including cases of folks coming from other communities. But it is not a prerequisite to use our services or to gain access to the full suite of services that people have a certain background, if that makes sense.
No, that's fine. I was just trying to understand what variable factors may be leading to the increase in demand that leads to this kind of a request. Thank you. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Just to, I guess, the city wasn't, I think, totally clear, didn't have a totally clear perspective as to how long you would be able to continue to operate without this interim use permit. How long does your current lease run for? And I guess, do you have any expectations as to how you would be able to continue to operate if this was not approved?
Current lease? Sorry, excuse me, Commissioner.
Commissioners, I'm Margot Gaffin. I'm the Facilities Director for Hennepin County, and our current lease runs through the summer with an option for the two-year renewal. Thank you.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I guess this question is maybe for staff, but you can also maybe chime in. So part of the property today, there is a restaurant. So I guess one of the questions that I have is, what is the plan for that restaurant? As well as the second question that I have is really around that food preparation that is being for the residents. Is that through the restaurant or is that done off-site? So I'm just thinking about the proximity or the attached restaurant on the property and what the plan is for that.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner, if I could ask Trish Thacker again to speak to this point.
Thank you, Commissioners. Currently, it's, the restaurant is operating. It's serving as a full-service restaurant. Anybody can come in from the community. In addition, they are actually the people that are providing our three meals per day. So they have a broader umbrella organization through which they're able to bring in the resources in order to provide meals for over 500 people, just, you know, kids and adults added together. But that restaurant has been fully functioning, and I believe it's their intent to continue to be fully functioning. And again, they are the people that are providing the meals. So we're trying to work in partnership with them.
And the follow-up question is, are they dining in the restaurant as well, or are they dining in a separate location?
So the people that are receiving our services do not dine in the restaurant. The restaurant operates separately, has those exterior entrances. The people that we are serving either, some choose to eat in their rooms, but we also have some larger dining areas where they might eat together more socially, but not in the restaurant.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I don't mean to belabor the point, but so if the lease goes through the summer and there's an extension available for two years, presumably you have legal rights to the space for the next two years. So is there a reason that this interim permit is being requested today? What is that reason?
Thank you, Commissioner. It is, the extension is dependent on approval from the city. As staff mentioned, we're here to try and get into compliance so that we're good neighbors.
From a process standpoint, this would have, the code would have to change. So we would be asked to make a recommendation. The city council would make a decision on changing the code to allow something like this at their April 1st meeting. If it is allowed, then the applicant would have to come back with a specific proposal for an interim use permit, which would probably come sometime, I would guess, in April or May, and then go through the process, which goes to the council. So it would, this is not them requesting an interim permit today. It's just about, do we as a planning commission think that this is an appropriate place to have that type of interim use?
Right. Okay. Yep. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much. This item is a public hearing, and so I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to speak on this item? Go ahead and come up. I'd ask that you register your name, and I don't know if there's other information that's requested on the sign-in sheet there, and then you will have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Steve Chesky, DJC Properties, 1900 West 98th Street, basically a kitty quarter from a location that we're in right now. I am also a resident of the city of Bloomington as well. Raised a family here of four kids and done good work through the community, volunteering in schools, churches, whatnot. So I am a little bit sympathetic for the problem that they're dealt with right now for homelessness for families. But as a property owner, I do have some concerns. The one concern that I do have, maybe for a question for the county, because it did pop up on the screen up there, for security and garbage, trash, well-being of the facility, are those going to be different than they are now, or are they going to change?
Right now, this is public comment, so you're welcome to.
That's basically my.
We'll make our notes and then.
I'm kind of addressing them, but yeah, they can answer the question.
They should make some notes, and if we then may follow up after the public comment.
Basically, right now, the area, any of you, I'm going to walk to drive by tonight after the meeting and take a look at it. Empty alcohol, packaging, bottles, cans, trash throughout the debris off the front road from the shelter, plastic t-shirt bags full of stuff stuffed out throughout the property, and eyesore to me. So if it's, if nothing is going to change for secure, for garbage handling, that should be addressed. The other problem that we've had past couple of years with pandemic is the property that we abut to the city, basically works, storage facility building there. There's a retaining wall with a high area there, and I've had to call police non-emergency a couple of times. Hey, there's people camping out, hanging out on that property. Where'd they come from? Don't know. Please have them removed. It's, you know, actually city property, so if they got fall off, fell off. It's, you know, actually city property, so if they got fall off, fell off that retaining wall and got hurt, it would be a city problem. But I'm adjoining property. I've got a business that's there running. We do need them to be vacated. So that problem there is still people wandering back into the community that really shouldn't be in an industrial area. So that has to be addressed as well. How are we going to maintain kids, adults, whatnot, from migrating into an industrial area that they have really no business in being in? I mean, this is not a residential neighborhood. They have no parks, there's no schools, there's very few resources for grocery stores, convenience stores, whatnot in this area. The other issue that I kind of go back to, it's, you know, it's a, it's a round hole trying to put a square peg in. And I really feel bad that we have this problem of homelessness, but this is an industrial property or industrial area, and I don't feel that we should be changing city code just when a problem pops up to make it fit that area. Who's the next business or government to come in and say, hey, we want to do this to this property, change our city code? The city planners developed this for a reason, and we have these four reasons. So those are my points. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Go ahead. Well, just with the comment, it's not a back and forth, right?
Okay.
So thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else who'd like to provide any testimony on this item in the chambers? Looks like we do have one online.
Chair Roman, I will unmute Mo French in case you'd like to speak to this item. You are unmuted now.
Hi, this is Mo French. I'm the actual VP of Operations for the hotel, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of history in the sense that we've been so successful in serving the community and the people of need. In 2016, we purchased the property. In March of 2020, we were asked to assist and to help our community. And through truly a lot of thought and process, we made that decision to do so. With those stipulations in place of the security, of the management, of the operations, we have never left the site. We have never turned it over to anybody. Our staff continues to be there 24 hours a day, as well as the operations, Hennepin County, and security. And even our first efforts were, of course, to help seniors, and the successful numbers that we had are just astonishing of the people that we save lives for. The partnership did change a little bit when we were asked to then help with children. And I think that's just a population that you can't turn away. And so looking at what we've done over the past number of years with families and the families that we continue to every day here, I got a letter today, my child got a letter, we weren't, there's no one standing in line. This is not someplace that people knock on the door, somewhat like other resources of temporary accommodations and housing. And I think that's, that needs to be addressed. Those code of conduct stipulations that we have are much more than we ever had when we operated as a hotel. They're, they're not allowed to have certain things of alcohol or drugs or things like that. They come in one entrance, it's security monitored and tracked. There's no outside guests that are allowed. I just, I just want to make sure that people understand, we have a sincere commitment to helping Hennepin County and to helping Bloomington to be a role model in assisting the end to homelessness and for sure to stand back there and say that we've assisted children. When the school buses came and when they come and when you see the kids get out, I just, those kids weren't going to school sometimes. And no matter what the circumstance is, the day they move out and they're going to a permanent home and we provide them with sheets and towels and a new home gift for them, I think we just have stood back and said, of course, there's so many other options. And of course, the city code, we understand we want to be compliant with that. We do hold a franchise license and we pay licensing fees every month to maintain our franchise agreement. It also provides that we uphold the standard of the operations, of the room conditions, of the city codes, with the meals, with the housing, with all of the requirements that we have to have. And we're, we're there. We're proud to be part of this, and we also are telling you that our success stories way outnumber several things. And we do have maintenance staff on site, and I hear what the gentleman just said, and I mean, we'll address those things and we can, we can change some of these things to make this accommodating to what the needs to make people feel that it's the right thing to do. But I just want you to know, as an owner of this property and as an operator of this property, we've done great things and we're in a great partnership with Bloomington and with, with Hennepin County in changing how people help other people. So I just, I want you to understand, we'll, we'll do whatever it takes, but we, we didn't take this on without any thought processes of, day one, security was there, you know, the operations, we never, we've always been there and we're going to continue to always be part of this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide testimony on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? The public hearing is closed. All right, discussion on this item. Before we start, I would, just a refresher for the body. I think we talked in this body about kind of the pyramid of authority or the triangle of authority, where there are times when we act in ways that are quasi-judicial, and then there are ways that we act that are legislative. And I think this is a time that is more in the legislative realm, and it's perhaps more discretion than in the judicial realm. Is that accurate?
Yes. Chair Roman, that's very accurate. Tonight, you have a very high level of discretion. You are acting in a legislative capacity as opposed to a quasi-judicial capacity. Things you would look at would be guidance from the compromise plan, city strategic plan, and just looking at, you know, issues of safety and housing, safety, security, and kind of general health, safety, welfare issues.
Thank you. So that was good for us to have that, and also for anyone watching or listening to know what our role is in this case. Discussion. Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A follow-up question to what Mr. Markard just talked about. I mean, how much can we factor in the potentially forthcoming application to this application? Are they completely separate? We have to assume we don't know anything about this future application or is it germane to this one?
Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, I would say that they are two separate applications. The, if the second application were to come, that would be a quasi-judicial action. You would have the ability to look at conditions of approval in that event. Really, tonight, what you're looking at is whether or not this use is appropriate as an interim use on a temporary basis within the I-2 district.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry.
Apologies, but I have one more question for the city. Something we typically ask is just, is there, have there been any, is there a frequency of calls into the police or fire department or anything relating to this use currently?
Chair, Chair Roman, Commissioner, we reached out to the police department, didn't get a chance to try and find out that information on complaints or police calls. That's probably something that is tracked. And, you know, certainly as part of an interim use permit application, we would do much more robust analysis of those sorts of concerns.
Well, I don't usually have first comments, but I have some notes. So this is an interesting situation, and unlike, it's, and I'm kind of, probably will contradict myself a little bit here, because, you know, I think about when we had, the schools were in front of us and we were, the topic of the stadiums was given to us and people were very passionate for or opposed to that. But in that case, our job was to look, does this or doesn't this meet the standard? Here's another situation where something is in front of us that, this is a little bit to Commissioner Cookton's point, the thing that people are passionate about is not actually the topic of the question tonight, but it is likely to be a subsequent topic. And so I think there's, there's the issue of the situation, but then there's the issue of the bigger question about land use. And that's where, for me, this is a very challenging thing for me to support. Commissioner, sorry, Senior Planner Centenario accurately talked about the comp plan, and I think I'm old, I'm the only one left who worked on that comp plan. But, you know, he said that that's what we look to, and it's pretty explicit in Section 4.2 about housing. But it's also pretty explicit before that in Section 2.2, where we talk about land use and redevelopment strategy. And we're very clear in that about that we preserve industrial sites with access to highway and freight and rail systems, not industrial uses, but industrial sites. And so for me, that's also something that bears perhaps equal, equal weight in there. And I also think about our track record in my time, five and a half years on this commission, and many of you have sat here with me through these meetings. Some interim uses are harder to dislodge than others. We have had some interim uses, as staff mentioned, that have gone on for decades. And again, while the specific, the specific challenge that our colleagues in the county are working very hard to solve is not the subject of this question, I have to think a little bit about, are we likely to dislodge that in two years or four years with, when we allow this type of an interim use? And so again, that's not the specific question we're asked about tonight, but I think we have to think about the unintended consequences of what a land use change might be. This is a really challenging problem that they're seeking to solve. I don't envy, I appreciate all the work that's being done. I mean, this pen in my hand here is from our colleagues or our friends at Oasis for Youth, who've been working in the community, doing this kind of work forever. And it doesn't end, unfortunately. And I think the problem is made worse by, again, I will pine a little bit, it's made worse by people beyond our, our community who I think are, are making the homeless situation worse for some of our, our people who are new to our community. And so it's a big problem. But I look at this other thing here, and I just don't know that this is the right place for that kind of a, of a thing. And it's because, also partly because of its location, whether it's the industrial uses or the, right up against the freeway, it's one thing if I choose to stay there for a night or two nights in a hotel and be subject to whatever those, those dangerous things are around there, whether it's freeway exhaust or industrial smells that I know we have a lot in that area. It's another thing for someone to be there for a month, three months, eight months, a year. And I guess I don't, I struggle with that being compatible. So those are my initial thoughts, and it's very hard because, like I said, I have one thought on this situation and how to help with that and how to be supportive of that, and I have another thought with the unintended consequence of permanent land use changes. Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I took the words out of my mouth for a thing, so I had to like cross out some things. But one thing I thought about is, I assume back in 2019, we as a city, as a community, changed the land use to, maybe land use isn't the right word, but we made hotels legally non-conforming in the I-2 district. And that decision was made, I assume for a very, for various reasons, like health, safety, transportation. So I, struggling with, a decision was made in 2019 to make this legally non-conforming, and now we're in 2024 and looking at making it an interim use, which then it can't be converted back. So those are some of the concerns that I have. I have, I also agree, though, you know, when somebody's at a facility or at a hotel for a night, and they're most likely there to service the businesses in the area, the industrial uses in the area, that's one thing. But over a long period of time, the exposure to the chemicals, the manufacturing processes, the transportation vehicles to come and go, the traffic are some concerns that I have, as well as some of the other concerns that I have with, this location is not, in I-2 and just general, where these properties are, the 60-some properties, there are no amenities for residents in that location, if there are residents. So the, the lack of amenities, lack of pedestrian safety, just because the inherent use of that location or that I-2 district is a very big concern of mine. And I've seen it firsthand, where I've seen families walking between industrial buildings and parking lots where large trucks are driving, and that concerns me, just in I-2 in general.
Commissioner Curry.
I guess I'm kind of, I mean, I understand we are basically, we basically make a decision based on the application that's presented. I just don't know, I guess this must be the best solution. I mean, this, the applicant has two years left. My struggle is to say, okay, I see two years for sure, but then creating an interim use that then could go on indefinitely, I don't, I mean, it, there must not be something in between that supports the two-year extension and that's it. Because I do also have concerns about the use in the I-2 district. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on a different solution than an interim, an interim use permit, so.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I actually have a question, Mr. Centenario. You mentioned if this were to not go forward, that there would be some level of off-ramping to the use and that the city would work with the county in terms of not having it be a one-day shut-the-door situation, lock-the-door kind of situation. I know we don't probably have a lot of experience in what that off-ramping process looks like, but do you have any sort of sense of what the timetable would even roughly look like? Because in my head, I'm thinking that a timetable for an off-ramp of such a big project that has been in place now for four years, there might be a two-year off-ramp. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, Chair Roman, Commissioner, I don't have any concept of what a timeline could be, just to be totally frank with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Chair. This is a tough one. I think one of the tougher applications we've had as long as I've been on this commission, and I'll just get some thoughts out, but I can tell you, I don't know. You know, we got a lot of people here trying to do the right thing. You know, I totally buy into everything of all the speakers that have spoken tonight, and yes, there are challenges there, but I think everyone is well-intended. They're trying to address a problem that we can all agree is a problem, and we're trying to do the right thing. And, you know, you're inclined to support people who are trying to do the right thing in one of the most difficult crises we have in our society today. So I really respect the work they do and appreciate the work they do. And the other thing I think about is, is sort of a bigger question. I think if we're honest about ourselves, the City of Bloomington isn't exactly doing our share of the load when it comes to homelessness. We are the third biggest city in the Twin Cities metro, and Minneapolis and St. Paul are taking the brunt of the action on all this. We really aren't. And there's probably an ethical obligation we have to do our part as, as the third biggest city here. And so is this how we do our part? And so is this how we do our part? Is this how we, you know, we may never get the public in the city to agree to have a more typical, classic homeless shelter, if you will, to be eloquent about it. But maybe we have a lot of hotels and as they get older, some of them convert to homeless shelters as new ones are built. Maybe that's how we do our part in the city of Bloomington to address the homelessness crisis. So maybe we need to be flexible to do our part. The problem is, is we have an application before us that asks, do we find that congregate living facilities are appropriate in I-2? And man, if you just, if we totally disregarded that, that there's an existing use there, and you ask me, what's the most incompatible place you could have a homeless shelter? It might be I-2. Like, it might literally be the worst zone we have is our industrial zones for this. And so, you know, I've sat here before and said, we are the body of practicality. There's no one in government lower than us, right? We're the closest form of government to the people. And we should be able to be the people that recognize when something is practical, even if it doesn't follow the rules, if you will. And that we should be able to find exceptions to things when we find that there's a public benefit, because we're the closest to the people. And so is this a time where we do the right thing? Well, is it the right thing? Is this the time where we bend the rules a little bit to try to do the right thing to help out our society? Or do we have to look at this practical, practically as we are directed to look at the application before us? And it's hard to, for me, to say that a congregate living facility is appropriate in I-2. And that's why I'm really torn, because I want to do what I think is probably the right thing, which is helping do our part. But I'm not sure I'm really allowed to do that by what we're asked to do as planning commissioners. So that's where I'm torn tonight.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I just keep coming back to it. I'm, I'm confused again. So there is an extension for the lease, which the, that extension is dependent upon approval of this use. But then we just had the Vice President of Operations for the hotel in support of this. So I don't know why this just can't, the facility cannot continue to operate for two years going forward. That seems like that should be happening regardless of our decision.
My understanding from materials that we read, and staff can clarify if I misread it, is that the current use is non-compliant.
But it's, but it's been non-compliant for three years.
I agree with you. But I, is that accurate?
Chair Roman, Commissioner, it is accurate. I think the county is trying to bring this use into compliance. And the way to do that in this particular case is to, the code has to be changed. And then interim use permit, if this code is adopted, would have to be approved. To essentially, I mean, the, bring it into compliance is really the best way to describe it, because technically it's being operated in violation to city code.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Again, it's, it, this is, this is challenging because we, and logically so. I mean, it's hard to separate the two things because they're intended, I mean, one relies on the other. But the reality is that they, as the planning manager said, they are two separate questions. And so it's, it's not realistic to expect the body to not consider the later question, but the reality is the first question stands on its own, as its own question, which is, do, do we as a planning commission, Commissioner Cookton said, think that I-2 is the right place for congre, and congregate living can be a lot of things. It's not just, not just homeless support. Other examples of congregate living would be like nursing homes and things like that. Is that, am I accurate in my description of congregate living? I don't really know for sure.
And we, well, I'll let you answer that one.
Yeah, Chair Roman, that's correct. There are other types of congregate living. Shelter would be one of many types. You know, other potential types, your traditional group home would be a form of congregate living. Any, any living environment where there's some sharing of like dining facilities, you know, living amenities, that type of thing would qualify as congregate living.
I ask these, the question because I think with the, the school application, for instance, we got into a lot of questions over state law and can this happen regardless of our decision? What happens in the situation that we, you know, did not approve something? Would the schools be, be able to push forward with something? So I just thought that would be relevant in this instance.
The other, so Commissioner Goldsman. No, I was just gonna follow up on, I think, what Commissioner Cookton was talking about on the broader question about uses. And yeah, we have more than our, more than our fair share of hotels. And, you know, I, I think there are, I don't know if there are others that still are being used, but there were some others that were being used during the pandemic and which I think was good for everybody. It was good for the people who needed the shelter. It was good for the hotels who were not getting the business. And we figured out a way in this body to, with the council to make that legally conforming. And so if I, if I apply that lens to this question, and I look at all throughout our city where we have some of our hotels that maybe are more aged and more either ready for redevelopment or conversion to housing, to Commissioner Cookton's point, almost every other one would be a far superior place and probably equally as accessible for, you know, master leasing, that I think would be a better suitable for a congregate living facility. And so again, for me, it just comes back to, you know, the hotel is there. It's legally non-conforming for use as a hotel. I just don't know that it feels like the place to have congregate living. Commissioner Goldsman.
And I, I, so the thing I think about is, you know, when we look at housing, we look at housing on the full spectrum of equitable housing. And one of the things that we've talked a lot about as a commissioner is having housing that's available, that's mixed with all of the other, you know, AMI market rate. And having it so that they have a place that is equitable and beautiful and they can be proud, right? That has green space and the amenities that they need and walkable. And I look at I-2 and it's none of those things. It is parking lots, industrial buildings, brownfields. There's not a lot of the, the, it doesn't feel like a place that someone could live and be proud. So I'm thinking about if a family is here in an I-2 district, does that feel like a home? Does that feel like a safe space? Does it feel that there are, they're not being exposed to elements that they shouldn't be exposed to? I feel like the I-2 just is not a good conducive, safe space, especially for families. Agree with your comment, though, on, this is all for good, you know, the intent is good. This is something that we as a community knew, need to do more of. But this location, I-2 zone, it just is not, for me, it's not a place that I think someone could be proud to live in, regardless of their situation.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. It's a, it's a conundrum, isn't it? Because we heard from the applicant that there has to be some, like, the, the financials have to work out too. And, you know, this is where you're gonna be able to make it work. And is it a choice between not ideal and we, we can't make it work? Is it nothing or something? I don't know. But that, that's tricky because, yeah, I mean, obviously this, this is not a for-profit thing. It's not making money. It needs to just be as kind of as cheap as possible to make it work and give people shelter. And that's not gonna happen in our nicest neighborhoods. It's gonna be here. And so that's a, that's a difficult quandary.
Indeed. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I, I think about this in terms of if we were looking at this interim use in other zoned districts, and who would we see in this room if we were to say, yes, interim use is allowed in a residential district? I can't even imagine the number of people here who would be not a fan of this and not a fan of this project. And so then it leads me to, well, where does this go then? And I, I am having a really hard time making heads or tails of this because I, I do think that it is not the right use for the I-2 district. However, is it the right interim use for the I-2 district? And it's similar to what we think about for airport parking. Is airport parking what we really want in the South Loop? No. But is it the right interim use? Because there's space availability, it's close to the airport? Yes. So for me, I'm starting to convince myself, it sounds like, that because it is labeled as interim and because there are time parameters around it, however, we have this, you know, I would consider quote unquote baggage with other interim uses that we've had in the city, including airport parking, that we don't want to see a lot of or more of. That should not preclude the use of an inter, interim use of something that will be beneficial to the community, regardless, setting the subsequent application entirely aside. I think the word interim here is really important. And if we are to be a community where we can, and I've said this before on this council, which is, we need to be a nimble community that can shift with what and shape with what is actually going on, both in the market and in our community. And I think this is where we do that. And so now, I can say, I would move to recommend that we move forward with this because of the word interim. And because I think that it is, it has a timeframe on it. And we now, we're now smarter, I believe, as a city to not say, we're interim, and then we're gonna approve an interim, and then we're gonna approve an interim, and approve an interim. I believe that we're smarter than that. And I believe that the, the real goal here is actually an interim use. So I'll leave my comments there.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Just for clarity, we talked about it being currently legally non-conformity, conforming, then going to a interim use. In three years' time, would they be legally non-conforming again? Because they still have a, an association with the hotel on their building? Or would they have to come back?
Yeah. Chair Roman, Commissioner Goldsman, my understanding would be that once the hotel use ceases for a period of 12 months, it would not be able to reestablish. So to reestablish the hotel would require some sort of code amendment to, again, open the door to a hotel use.
So that's regardless of their franchisee association as being a hotel?
Chair Roman, Commissioner Goldsman, that's correct. Totally independent of, of their franchise arrangement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Markergard, we're hearing that it's already not been a hotel for four years, but maybe not on the books. So is this by what's on the books or what we know?
Yes. Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton. So from our perspective today, the use is a hotel. There is what I would call somewhat of a gray line between when a hotel no longer becomes a hotel. One of the issues we would look at, hotels are limited to 30-day stays. We've heard that that's not true in this case. That moves it away from a hotel. Certainly for decades, blocks of rooms and rooms have been leased for shelter purposes at many, many hotels. That's always been true. But when the entire hotel is leased, that is a little different dynamic, changes the kind of nature of whether or not it's a hotel. But we have viewed it as a hotel, you know, up until this application.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think that's really important information, but it's not appropriate for this application. That's for the next one.
Fair. And I think one of the things that I think about in is, again, what are, and we've talked about before, what are unintended consequences of decisions. And so I think I can see kind of where we're, where we're aligning, which is fine. I think it's, it's what else are we opening up in I-2? What other types of congregate uses are, are an option? And in this specific location, again, which is the next application, but we're opening up that application to come before us if we approve this. You are taking a legally non-conforming hotel. And if the next application is approved, then it becomes no longer able to be a hotel. And then you are, in my opinion, again, it's not where we're asking to consider it, but it's, it's the, what's the next unintended consequences? You are setting yourself up for a perpetuity, a perpetual interim use permits, because there's no other use for that place other than to tear it down. And the city has had almost zero track record of not renewing interim use permits. And I, I hear Commissioner Albrecht say we're smart enough, but I don't know that we are. Commissioner Curry.
Yeah. I, I mean, there's the facilities, my, the facility's been open for three years. And, I mean, I know it seems there maybe have been some challenges in the neighboring parking lots. I mean, the city council, we're making a recommendation to the city council, is my understanding. So as a planning commissioner, I mean, it seemed, I just can't help but think that this use is not compatible with the neighboring uses. So, you know, the city council can do what they want with that. I think instead of making it a big ethical decision, that's, seems to be the, the basic premise of the, the planning situation, right?
Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Chair, where I'm really torn is, I feel like I want to do the right thing by helping to address the issue of homelessness. And I professionally have worked with a lot of people who live in the two Twin Cities. And I can feel, when I talk about how much I believe in the city of Bloomington, I can feel the, you know, looking down upon us for not doing some of the right things, particularly when it comes to addressing the crisis of homelessness. And I, I don't know. I just wonder if this is our opportunity to start doing the right thing, even if it's not perfect. But man, I-2 is almost the absolute worst place to do it. That's where, that's where I'm torn. I still can't make up my mind.
Commissioner Curry.
I guess I'm just gonna say that from the planning standpoint, we saw the charter school, or I, I guess I wasn't even on the planning commission at that point, but there was the charter school application. And this city council, there wasn't, I don't think, much support for children being in the area. The, the
The the letters from neighbors, I guess, again, so just. I mean, I totally understand the challenge and I think I really hope, you know. The extension for two years can. You know, you can see it through for the two years and figure out something that is. Hopefully some kind of transition to somewhere, but from a. Planning perspective, I don't. It does not make sense to me, so. That's just.
Yeah, Commissioner Cookton, I would build on what you were talking about is, you know. I think for me, if this was, if it was a request for an interim use in any of those other districts that we have hotels. I I don't think I'd have a problem with that and we could do our part in a lot of part of town parts of town. Um I just don't think that this is the right place for that, and I also think it's inconsistent with. We have two parts of our of our comp plan that are intention here. Both are both are important and both are key values of the city, but they're intention.
I just wonder if we're not gonna see this application in any other zone because it's not affordable for the county or whatever other body is.
It's possible.
This is the only place we're gonna see it, it's because it's the most affordable.
It's possible.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Is it the most affordable because it's? The least equitable or at least desirable? And that's my sticking point is, is this the appropriate place for people to live with dignity and I. I too is not a place. Regardless on the situation and I completely agree. We want to help where we can, but we want to help in the right way where people can be proud and can be safe and can. Be. Living with dignity while they're transitioning and I too, it for me is not. That's just my.
Sir Chair, I think I still go back to, and I apologize for repeating myself, but. Having a having a neighborhood with dignity, I I don't know if that's an option that's on the table. I don't think we're ever gonna see that application, we're not gonna have them come before us and say, we want to put up a homeless shelter in Bloomington Central Station. It's got this beautiful park and it's got all the amenities and all the, that's not gonna happen and so. This is our, this is our opportunity, it's the application before us, I don't know if we're ever gonna see another.
My instinct is that we are probably ready one way or another for a motion. We can take a vote and see if that works or if we need a different motion. So if anyone would like to make a motion, I don't want to cut off discussion, but I feel like we've kind of. I don't know that we've changed a lot of our conversation in the last five minutes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
In case PL two zero two two dash two zero six, I move to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance. Amending the city code to allow congregate living facilities as an interim use in the I two limited industry zoning district. Oh, sorry.
Here Roman, I apologize for the typo, PL two zero two three, my apologies.
Two three or two four?
Two three. It was apply for at the end of twenty twenty three.
In case PL two zero two four three. Dash two zero six, I move to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance amending the city code to allow congregate living facilities as an interim use in the. I two limited industry zoning district.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to recommend. Adoption of a zoning code to the city council, any further discussion? And also, as we ask, I'm gonna ask for a show of hands because I know this is a close vote and we also have some folks with a voice. Challenge, all those in favor say aye and raise a hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Opposed.
The motion fails two four. Would someone like to make another motion?
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. In case PL two zero two three dash two zero six, I move to. Move to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance, I'm sorry, I've moved to recommend denial. Uh by the city council to not adopt an ordinance amending city code to allow. Congregate living facilities as interim use in the I two limited industry zoning district. Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to recommend denial of an ordinance amending the city code, any further discussion? All those in favor of recommending denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes for two. This item will be on the April. Uh first city council meeting agenda. Thank you all for being here, for your advocacy and for your work. Item number two is a study item, it is the city's greenhouse gas emissions study and sustainability coordinator Strauss has the presentation.
Thank you, good evening. We're good to go. Good evening, everyone, I am Emma Strauss, I'm the sustainability coordinator at the city. And I am joined by Ash Narinen from SRF Consulting and we're here tonight to present on a study that the city has been working on. So I'm gonna kick things off and then pass it off to Ash, but essentially. Why are we here tonight and why did we do this study? It really goes back to twenty seventeen when city council passed a resolution in support of the Paris Agreement. That we are going to be working towards those goals of carbon neutrality by twenty fifty. A year later, the city council passed this energy action plan for the city stating. That we are working towards a seventy five percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from a twenty sixteen baseline by twenty thirty. Then, um following that, we um in twenty um. Twenty one, we had, sorry, twenty twenty two, the city declared a climate emergency. Recognizing that we are in a crisis and our need to work towards reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and take. Actions to do that, especially focused on our largest sources, which in the case of Bloomington is natural gas and electricity. Our energy use followed by transportation are the two largest sources contributing to the problem. Following that, um in the city's strategic plan, um we have that one of the strategic objectives is by twenty thirty. To have the city achieve significant improvements in the indices measuring the community's environmental and individual health. And one of those is tied specifically to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So because in the past, we've had a lot more access to data around natural gas and electricity. We've been able to track progress towards those goals, but we haven't had that same attention to transportation. So understanding how we're gonna work towards these goals has been a little bit more murky. So that's why we hired um SRF as the consulting firm to do a deep dive and give us. Kind of the first step to understanding how we're currently getting around the city and how that relates specifically to greenhouse gas emissions and climate. So that we can have a better understanding of the various strategy buckets that we need to be looking at to be able to achieve that. Twenty fifty goal of carbon neutrality. And to illustrate this, a sense of. Going from point A to point B, wherever it is in the city, right now, if you have six people. The most, if you have access to a car, it is the most efficient way to get around the city, we were, it was built around cars. So unfortunately, that means whether you're going to work, school, the grocery store, you're taking um greenhouse gas emissions and. Carbon emissions with you. The goal is to look at still having six people get to. Wherever they need to go in the community, but looking at providing more options, so maybe some people can take the the bus to work. Maybe someone's gonna bike like I did to work today. Maybe someone needs to drive, right, and instead of putting gasoline in that car, they're then using electric vehicle. So they're still getting to where they need to go, but you can see that there's less carbon being emitted to get them there. So this is really looking at increasing mobility options and accessibility, reducing those greenhouse gas emissions and also improving. Community health, thinking about the current pollution that um the way that we're getting around is causing for people who are. Living near the busiest roads in the city, um and also the more active lifestyle that's um could benefit community health. So with that, I will pass it off to Ash to walk through the research that has been done.
Thank you, Emma, and thank you commissioners for having us here. My name again is Ash Narinen with SRF Consulting and uh like Emma said, we're hoping to present. The results of the study, which is really just a first step in helping the city of Bloomington understand where we are today. And where we hope to go with from the transportation sector. Uh just a quick glimpse of our project team here, I was helped on this project by my uh colleagues Paul Morris and Sam Rickert who. Did several, many of, much of the modeling and analysis and strategic framework. So um the purpose of this project really is to, like Emma said. Uh understand where the transportation system lies in terms of carbon emissions. Uh and how it can help the city of Bloomington achieve its uh long term carbon reductions goal. We also want to identify high level strategies to achieve the net zero goal. And also find ways in which these strategies can align with other city goals identified in strategic priorities, including equity and inclusion and economic growth. So quick overview of our project steps, we uh looked at what existing conditions were like in the city of Bloomington. We looked mostly for publicly available data to inform our analyses. Uh and then really trying to understand what different, what are the different ways in which. Uh a net zero goal from the transportation sector could be achieved, and so we developed a few scenarios there. Uh based on those scenarios, we developed a strategy framework. That then informed the individual strategies themselves, which are uh still being formed. So that it can set up the city to understand what some of the next steps might be. So here is uh an overview of carbon emission trends in the city of Bloomington. Uh we see uh that the uh the the green uh bars there are carbon emissions from the transportation sector. Uh with the red bar showing energy and the remaining being waste. Uh we see that energy emissions have declined uh over the years primarily because of new renewable energy sources coming online. Uh but the transportation problem has been a little bit harder to crack. Uh we've seen transportation emissions remain either the same or go up over the last decade or so. Uh except in twenty twenty when this uh range of bars cuts off because of. Uh the demand and travel, the the drop in travel we saw during COVID. Uh we also see that about forty percent of the uh city's emissions come from the transportation sector. And from within the city of Bloomington itself, uh we can see here a breakdown of different sectors and how much they contribute to carbon emissions. Uh and we see about uh within the transportation sector, the majority of emissions come from passenger vehicles with the remainder made up. Of medium and heavy duty vehicles and a small sliver from the transit system. Looking at where the city of Bloomington is uh today, we looked at uh transportation costs per household. Uh in the city of Bloomington and compared them to Hennepin County. Uh we find that um the city of Bloomington has slightly higher uh average transportation costs per household. Uh thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars in Bloomington versus twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety six uh in Hennepin County. Uh the city owns about one point eight three autos per household compared to one point seven one for the county as a whole. And the city of Bloomington uh uh average household drives about a thousand miles more than this than Hennepin County. Uh we also took a quick look at the uh capital investment plan and we found that. Uh the uh the breakdown in this graph shows that we spent about two hundred and thirty million dollars on. Auto centric infrastructure and about twenty seven point five on bike uh biking infrastructure and about thirteen point two million on pedestrian infrastructure. Uh I I do want to note that a lot of the auto infrastructure. Uh projects may have bike and ped elements uh within them that are not reflected in this graph because uh that's not how the CIP splits that up. We also wanted to talk about transportation equity and mobility justice in the city. Uh we know that past transportation decisions often marginalized uh some of our most vulnerable community members. Uh often by building freeways through uh through neighborhoods uh and those impacts still. Affect us today. Uh for example, folks who live near freeways who breathe uh worse air. And we also know that accessing multimodal transportation is a key way uh folks can break out of poverty. And we know that walking and biking access is not distributed equitably across the city. And we see that a higher share of uh BIPOC residents ha- do not have access to. Good quality walking and biking facilities. Uh so we uh we do have an opportunity in reducing transportation emissions to also uh reduce inequity within the system. So a quick summary of our our findings is that we we know that uh for close to forty percent of emissions make up. Uh transportation emissions make up total emissions in Bloomington. Uh driving in single occupancy vehicles make up the majority of emissions within transportation. Uh while emissions from energy generation has declined, uh transportation missions have remained steady or risen. Uh and Bloomington households spend uh more in transportation costs than the county average and they drive more. Uh than that than people do in Hen- Hennepin County as a whole. So we're looking to see what some of the pathways may be to carbon neutrality and uh trying to identify. Uh what what steps the city could take towards creating a zero carbon transportation system. Uh so we built out of uh four scenarios where uh and here's a quick snapshot of what. What went into that scenario development, ranging from gathering existing data, uh identifying those scenarios themselves, building models that could. Uh quantitatively tell us what uh it would take to get us there, then we ground truth it and validate it with existing. Uh data from other sources and then use that to build some of the initial strategies that you'll see. So some of the assumptions here were that we were going to identify quantitatively how to reach um carbon neutral. Uh transportation system by twenty fifty, uh modeled a mix of different ways to reach that goal. And we found that there were two key pathways identified, the first being electrifying our transportation system and then reducing driving. So reducing vehicle miles traveled, the number of miles driven uh by someone uh within a specified geographic area. Uh usually within a year. Uh so we set our basic benchmark goal of transportation GHG reduction of absolute eighty percent reduction from what it is today. And we developed four scenarios based on that goal, one was a high electrification scenario. Uh one was a high VMT reduction scenario and two scenarios that were a mix of both, uh that combined both VMT reduction and electrification. So I'll go take you through these scenarios here, uh the first one uh requires. This is the high electrification scenario and to reach eighty percent greenhouse gas reductions by uh twenty fifty, we found that we'll need to. Uh electrify sixty five percent of all on road vehicles um by twenty fifty. That is the entire fleet of cars within the city of Bloomington, sixty five percent of them have to be electric. And all new vehicle sales have to be electric by twenty forty five and that would require a ten percent reduction in driving across the city as well. The second one, uh it's a high VMT reduction scenario and we found that uh to achieve a forty percent reduction in VMT. Uh we would also need to have forty five percent of on road vehicles be electrified by by then and eighty five percent of new vehicle sales. Uh be electric by twenty fifty. Uh the third scenario is what we call middle of the road one and we found thirty percent reduction by uh twenty fifty in VMT would be required. With a fifty five percent uh electrification uh goal with all new vehicles electrified by twenty fifty. And then scenario four, which was kind of the uh I'd say the most middle of the road scenario. Uh where we found that to to reach the eighty percent GHG reductions, we'd have to have twenty percent reduction in VMT by twenty fifty. Uh and sixty percent of on on road vehicles be electrified by twenty forty seven. So we uh took a look at uh whether this compares um favorably with other analyses done. We found uh that uh it it was very similar to what the Department of Transportation found in twenty nineteen as well. Uh where we we found uh similar levels of VMT reduction and uh electrification required, but the Minnesota. Study also looked at both um heavy heavy vehicles, medium duty vehicles. Biofuels and mobile refrigerants, which were not within the scope of our study. So um while uh you we we do want to reach carbon neutral by twenty fifty, uh our model. Found that we would have to cover the remaining gap uh by a variety of ways which. You know, which, some of which for which technologies do not exist yet, but could come online. such as carbon capturing or sequestration or carbon credit, buying carbon credits from other sectors. So again, a summary of the scenarios is achieving the carbon neutral goal by 2050 will require a multi-pronged approach, which is focused both on electrification and reducing driving. There is no one silver bullet. Multiple strategies will have to work together to achieve this. Like I said, findings are in line with other analyses. And the rest of this presentation will have scenario four, the twenty percent VMT reduction scenario as the basis for the recommendations. So we also looked at what are the different ways in which the city of Bloomington could effect change here? And so we found that the main, there's there's probably, there's there's several different ways in which the city has control over transportation. But the primary ways we thought were most effective were capital investments, how the city spends money and what they spend money on, the design of the public right-of-way itself, zoning and land use, and policies and incentives. We also took a look at data that tried to see how trips are being made within the city of Minneapolis, I'm sorry, the city of Bloomington. How are people traveling and why are they traveling? And what is the distance that they're traveling for? So our analysis looked at trips that either originate or conclude within the city of Bloomington. And this analysis uses a typical travel pattern for for Thursday. And we found some interesting numbers here. If you look on this graph, you can see that about forty, about fifty percent of trips result in about, I'm sorry, about trips that are about between zero and twenty miles in length, reflect in about fifty percent of the total miles driven in the city of Bloomington. And then, as you can see, as the trip lengths get higher, they make up the remainder of the miles driven in the city. And so I'll talk a little bit more about that. Here, the the, you can see why, what what trip purposes people are traveling for generally in the city of Bloomington. And we found that the the main reason people travel, the biggest reason people travel is for work, followed by shopping and then going home. And we found that the trips that are less than five miles in length within the shopping category make up about twenty-two percent of trips. Trips that are five to ten miles make up about about nineteen percent. Ten to twenty make up about sixteen percent. And about twenty make about fifteen percent of of total VMT. And you can see similar patterns for the others as well, work and home. And one interesting thing we found was that work trips, as they get longer, contribute a lot more to total driving in the city of Bloomington. But shopping trips, if I go to the next slide here, you can see actually skew a little bit shorter. So again, kind of the biggest takeaway here is that even though a majority of trips are short trips, they do not make up the majority of how much people drive in the city of Bloomington. And seventy-five percent of VMT is generated by trips over ten miles. And shopping, eating, social and school trips tend to skew shorter. So to kind of get to the next stage here, we created a framework to understand what are some of the ways in which we can move the transportation sector towards carbon neutrality. And based off of strip data, we came up with a four-pronged framework, all of which sort of interact with each other. The first being shifting trips, which which means shifting trips from single occupancy vehicles to active transportation and to public transit. Avoiding trips, which makes it possible to meet all of your needs without having to travel in your own vehicle. Shortening trips so that the 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 distance you travel to reach your destination actually is not as high. And then providing incentives for people to to drive less. So some examples of what shifting trips might look like. One is right-sizing our transportation infrastructure, increasing the frequency of of destinations that are accessible and the reliability of public transit, increasing transit access and connectivity, enhancing public, enhancing the safety and comfort of active transportation, such as bike infrastructure and walking infrastructure, and then decreasing economic barriers to walking, biking and transit modes. Avoiding trips, which would be mostly travel management strategies. So those would be things like employer-sponsored programs where you you get a bus pass instead of subsidized parking, for example, or an increasing virtual access to to telework so that you can maybe see your doctor or work from home online. And then shortening trips, which is land-use decisions that encourage compact development and discourage sprawl, supporting transit-oriented development, increasing the availability of basic needs that people need within close to where they live or work, and then increasing the availability of specialty services. And then incentivizing trip, which is finding ways to to, you know, provide both carrots and sticks so folks feel like they can change their travel behavior a little bit, which is increasing things like increasing parking pricing, incrementally with proximity to urban centers or reducing parking availability, providing transit passes, providing convenient parking and storage for bikes and subsidizing e-bike purchases. And again, these are just some examples and are not a comprehensive list of strategies, but just kind of giving you an idea of what what falls under each of these broad categories. And so, you know, we really want to kind of show that travel behavior is really influenced by the availability of a multitude of transportation options that are accessible, affordable, available, comfortable and safe. And here you can see many different types of ways in which people could get around in a in a in a city that is moving towards that net zero goal. And finally, you know, what do some of these scenarios really look like in practice? You can see three examples here. On the left, we have an example of someone who, instead of driving to the grocery store once a week, they can purchase an e-bike and use that to make trips where they don't have too many bags to carry. And so you could replace maybe three out of every four car trips that way. In another example, bus rapid transit signal priority might, somebody who's dropping off kids to childcare might find that because of that signal priority, it actually takes less time than driving. And so they could use that, use the bus instead of driving every day. And then finally, someone who goes into the office five days a week could work from home one of those days. And so while they're at home, you could walk to the grocery store to grab lunch or maybe go see your dentist or something. And so really, the the point of this is trying to show what a twenty percent reduction in VMT might look like by 2050, that it's not something that is, you know, a drastically different future than it is today because a lot of these things are already happening. But really something that can have a lot of gains just by shifting travel behavior a little bit through the different ways in which the city can can exert control. So really, as Emma said, you know, we're at the very first step here. We can see a timeline where we started with the net zero goal. We declared a climate emergency. And this project really is to understand, you know, identify, prioritize and communicate what effective transportation decarbonization strategies might be and really to set the stage for policymakers and decision-makers to to set goals and targets if need be so that we can kind of measure our progress along the various decarbonization target horizons as we approach 2050.
With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Emma.
Thank you. Well, we'll open it up for questions, but thank you so much for having us tonight. We will also be going to the Sustainability Commission. And we will also be going to City Council to present this on April 1st. And we'll be taking feedback and ideas and incorporating them into the final report and presentation. So thank you.
Thank you. This is a study item, so a little open conversation dialogue. Commissioner Cookson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure. I think this is a question for you. What is being asked of the Planning Commission tonight?
This would be one of my questions about what is it specifically that you're looking for feedback on? And the reason I ask is because there are a lot of things in here. And I'm unclear, some of it, what is it? There's, there's a lot of things that are good ideas that we all should be doing. There are some things that the city may have a hand in. There are some things that, from a land use perspective, there may be a hand in. And then the other things are just things that, boy, I sure hope everyone who lives here just does a better job at this. And so to Commissioner Cookson's point, what's most helpful from a Planning Commission perspective versus my own opinion as a resident of Bloomington?
Thank you, Chair Roman and Commissioner Cookson. I would say the main purpose of tonight is honestly awareness that this is where the city is dipping their toe into getting this baseline information. We will be going to City Council on March 18th to ask for a request to use strategic priority funds to fund a climate action plan. And that would be a comprehensive document that would include transportation, but really be a document that incorporates all climate mitigation strategies and thinking about climate equity and also resiliency within that. And I see that being, if that is approved, the next step to really dig deeper into this initial data to understand what goals need to be set. And then more specifically, out of some of these options that SRF provided, to have a deeper conversation of what direction and what strategies do we actually want to adopt as a city? So tonight, it's mostly having the discussion of high level. This is where we're going, I think, definitely including the Planning Commission in the development of, if the Climate Action Plan does move forward, definitely wanting to have voices in on those various sections, especially transportation. But tonight, an overall feedback, if this is something that the commission's been thinking about. And then if there's any particular, going back to the buckets of city influence, if there's areas that you feel are particularly important for the city to be focusing on.
So what I gathered out of that is most relevant to our body is our role as oversight of transportation issues in the city. But certainly, any other feedback is useful, too. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thank you, Chair. Can we see, there was a- Thank you. Could we see, there was a slide that showed the percentages of emissions and usage of greenhouse gas? Can we just see where those are coming from again? It was like a pie chart.
The four horizontal bars?
It was like a pie chart, honestly.
Yeah, so Chair Roman, Commissioner Goldsman. So the data for this, each year from Excel Energy and CenterPoint Energy, we have data specifically on the use of one-to-four unit residential. And then that's also segmented for commercial industrial. And then municipal is also separated. For this, we were able to do a special segmentation for one, five-plus multifamily units. So that's broken out for this. So that's annual data that we analyze from the utilities. The data for transportation that was taken from the Regional Indicators Initiative. So that goes back to the pie charts from this diagram that there was state funding to do that analysis. And that comes from MINDOT data for VMT within the city of Bloomington. That funding stopped, which is why we stopped it with 2022. But that's also another reason to us as the city invest in and getting more information about the emissions on our own.
Okay. I guess two comments that I have is, looking at these data sources, obviously, the latter part of your presentation was really targeted on resident, individual residents, that, you know, behavior changes that they as individuals can make. And I think that the city can do a lot there with, you know, reinvigorating commercial nodes, making sure that there's amenities for for people within their communities and where they can live, study and work, hopefully all within Bloomington like I do. But I also look at this this chart here and think about, and especially the next one is really about the industry that is within Bloomington and Bloomington facilities as well. We have a lot of electricity use, natural gas use in our commercial and industrial buildings. So I look at the impact with you, working with those property owners can be a, you've got one owner, a much bigger facility can make a bigger impact quicker than each individual person making a change. So I'm not sure how you want to prioritize that, but thinking about, you know, hey, everybody, let's turn our thermostats down by two degrees. If we could get buy-in by ten of the, nine of the ten businesses in a block, that could make a bigger impact than the one or two residents that choose to bike to work. Last thing I wanted to say, and we talked a little bit about the the vehicles traveled. We talk a lot about transportation and how we need to make our streets more walkable, bike safety. I work a mile and a half from my home, but I don't feel safe riding my bike in the city of Bloomington for a mile and a half. So there's a lot of infrastructure work to make sure that that's safe, even for people that could bike if they wanted to. So those are just some comments I have.
Commissioner Curry?
Chair Roman, can I respond to?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I want, I think for context, definitely hearing that there's a lot of natural gas and electricity focus. So the city does have programs with large building benchmarking that we are targeting our largest users of energy in the city. We're focused on time-to-sale energy disclosure and have residential programs. So a lot of work has been happening in the past five years because we have dedicated strategies. The purpose of this research is to recognize, even if we do everything to take away the yellow and the orange up there, we still have the passenger vehicles in blue, which is a significant portion. And to reach our goals, we have to have all of it, you know, go down to zero. So it's one piece of that overall plan.
Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair. So I don't, in terms of all this, the different parts of the strategies, I guess I don't have any like expert thoughts on that at this point. You know, we had a, we had a meeting or two about electrification and the the plan. And since then, you know, I guess I kind of, I've, so I work with like, with facilities that deal with a lot of electricity. And the more, like, the more and more time goes on, the more I'm seeing that there is a lack of power available and that power is becoming more difficult to distribute within cities. And I just think, in terms of your scenarios, I think you probably would want to focus more on the one that has less electrification, just because I think it's, it's going to be difficult to get electrification out as much as people hope it would be out or as much as you think you could develop it. So as an example, I mean, we've seen a project that, you know, where somebody wants to build, I don't know, let's just say twenty electric or twenty parking charging stations, right? So that's like a couple megawatts of power. And, you know, to do that, you basically have to double the power consumption of what would be an apartment building today or maybe a large apartment building. So if our if our houses on average use five KW of power, and then you have a charging station that also uses five KW power, you're doubling the demand for power from electrification as well. So I just am very skeptical of the grid having the ability to support all of that. So just something to consider. That's just something I see on a day-to-day basis, so.
Thank you.
I think you, you raise a good point and something that as you move along in the plan. It's fascinating, I went, there's a couple layers there with that. To build on what you're talking about, was at a, one of the sessions last fall at the Minnesota APA Conference that several of us attended. And it was talking about what would it take to decarbonize the homes? They did a study of what it would take to decarbonize the homes specifically in Minneapolis. And what was, I thought was the most telling and what may be instructive in the work that you're going to embark on. Because I've done a couple of these climate action plans at work and it's easy when you're in a contained entity and you say, we have control over how we heat our buildings, how we send our employees to travel, how we get people, I mean, so that's fine. That's a, that's a contained thing. This is a, this is an influence model here. This is not a a directive model. Because we're talking about a community that we want to figure out, how can we help people, incentivize them to make a different choice than-
to figure out how can we help people, incentivize them to make a different choice than, than maybe either what they're used to or the easiest choice. And so what I remember took away from that was, you know, I've had in my head for a while at our house, we've talked about, well, okay, we've got a furnace that's fifteen years old, it probably has five more years of life in it, so let's start to think about what the next type of heat source might be, you know, dual fuel heat pump or whatever. But then that come, that session talked about, well, if you don't first upgrade your windows, and if you don't first increase the insulation in your home, that will not be a cost-effective solution for most people, separate from the issue of externalized costs that come from burning carbon. And that's a whole different number that we don't quantify as a society for, because it makes us uncomfortable to have to think about that. But so the point was that some of it is going to be about just making it painfully clear and simple, and whether it's incentives or, you know, it's going to be a, probably a moving of money from one pocket to another about, you know, it's not just all of a sudden I woke up and I needed a new furnace and, boy, I got the electric one and it was great. Well, suddenly my bill is fifty percent higher because I didn't replace my sixty-year-old windows and my insulation has now collapsed and is providing no insulation in my attic, right? So these are all things that we have to help people think about. I also wonder, to your point, Commissioner Curry, if some of the solutions to that over time, and we're talking a twenty-five-year time horizon, maybe more distributed, distributed production, meaning solar on homes, for example, or things like that. And I also, I believe it's in front of the Utilities Commission now that Excel is looking at moving everybody to time-of-rate use, which, again, I don't pay attention to when my dehumidifier runs, but if I was paying a lot more from three to seven, I might put my dehumidifier on a timer and not run it from three to seven kind of thing. It's about, it's, it's a lot about, I think, how do we, for some people, it's about education. They'll do something different just by knowing. Other people will be like, I can't afford that, and no matter what you do, I can't afford that. And for some people, a small incentive may help. And I, I support the idea of, of that zero. I think we also have to be realistic that if we can't get to zero, it's pretty darn good if we can get to eighty percent. That's just my opinion. And my electric car is done charging. It just popped up. Yes, Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my comments are going to be a bit eloquent, so please forgive me. I think, Mr. Chair, we are a little over our skis on this. I'm a big believer, and anyone that sits in the lunchroom with me might know this, a big believer that the United States has different levels of government for a good reason. There's the federal government that does high-level stuff like currency and taxes, or, you know, maybe the taxes is a state thing. And we have municipal governments that are like close to the people and do things that affect residents, and they're very important. All levels of government are important, and they do different things. And I don't think decarbonization is appropriate for municipal government, because I don't think we have a big impact on it. I want to be very clear, decarbonization is important to me, and I'm not minimizing the overall effort, but I think it's more appropriate to be done by higher levels of government. What concerns me is that, you know, we're doing all this work, the city of Bloomington's hired a consultant, we're doing all this work. Well, that means the city of Richfield has to hire SRF or another consultant, the city of Dinah has to do it, the city of Eden Prairie has to do it, the city of Burnsville, Eagan, whatever. Is it, make the most sense that as municipalities, we're all hiring consultants to look at this? Or would it be a lot more appropriate if the state government or federal government was looking at these things? Also, things like the, excuse me, the slide in front of us about electrification of vehicles. We want sixty-five percent in this scenario of all vehicles to be EVs. The city can't influence that. We do have a lot of car dealerships here, and maybe we could say, well, we're just only going to sell EVs in Bloomington. Well, if somebody wants to buy a combustion car, they'll, they'll drive to Burnsville and get one. And so, again, I just think it's something that the city of Bloomington can't control. And so I appreciate what we're trying to do here. I think everybody's well-intended, this report was well-done, and everybody's well-intended and passionate about it, and I think that's great. I don't think the city of Bloomington is, like, there are some things in here that we can definitely do, and I'm supportive of it. We've talked about these things already, we should be downsizing a lot of our roads, we need to go on a road diet here in the city, and there are things in the city we can do. And I think what I'm getting to is that I think we should be focusing future effort on this, on things that are very specific to the city of Bloomington. What can we do as a city to help out our environment? So things like a road diet and other things. But as far as like, maybe trying to get people to travel less miles or hoping that people are going to buy EVs by something we can do as a city, I, I think that's not an appropriate use of our residents' tax dollars to hire a consultant to do this. And I just don't, I think there are really important municipal issues we could be focused on. Our first application tonight, that's a municipal issue, that's where I want our really smart people working. And man, I, I just think our brainpower could be spent on better things than something we have very, very little control over. Want to be very clear, great work, I think this is fantastic stuff, like, it's really good information, you've helped paint the picture, but I just think there are better things we could be working on.
Commissioner Curry?
I just got, sorry, thank you, Chair. So my earlier comment, houses, you know, using maybe five KW on average, I think the plant, the charging stations are more like fifty KW, right? So--
At a home?
At a, at a home.
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. So it's the industrial or the, like, the Tesla charging stations that you see on the road--
Hundred and fifty, two fifty, three hundred and fifty.
Yeah. So, so anyways, that was, I just wanted to make that correction. And I think in terms of what Commissioner Cookton is saying, I think it's just a focus on infrastructure and making things more friendly for bikers and walkers to reduce vehicle miles traveled. That's my only obvious suggestion for the day, so.
Yeah, I think there's, I would echo the part about infrastructure, but I think there is a, is a component, and I don't know how big the component is, it might not be a big component, but you talked about, Commissioner Cookton, you talked about federal, state, county, municipal, and I think there's a credibility and a trust factor that probably is stronger at the municipal level. So are we going to dictate what people do at the city? Of course not. But I think the information and the education that we might be able to produce, or the resources, we might be able to help people understand locally, you know, who are your vendors or what are your resources, that may have more of an impact than anything we would, as a city, put in place as a regulation or, you're right, the things that the city can change are limited. We've, we've found that in our own work when we have had troubles getting metro transit to serve parts of our city. And so transit's a big part of this solution and, and as it probably should be. But we, we don't run our own transit system, I hope we don't ever do that. But we also are at the whim of a partner that is, to date, been a little bit unreliable. So you're right, there are certain things we can and can't control in the, in the realm of here, the things we can control are probably pretty slim. Anything else for the group?
Thank you--
Thank you.
--for your time.
All right. We have a plethora of backlogged Planning Commission meeting synopses for approval. And so I'm going to take these one at a time, because we have different members present at different meetings. First one is November thirtieth, and Commissioner Curry was absent. Entertained a motion?
I move to approve the planning, draft Planning Commission meeting synopsis from November thirtieth, 2023.
Second?
Motion, a second to approve November thirtieth meeting synopsis. Discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion passes. The next item is December twenty-first. Absent was myself, Commissioner Cookton, Commissioner Curry. That does leave three of the four, which is a quorum. So November, December twenty-first.
I move to approve the draft Planning Commission meeting synopsis from December twenty-first, 2023.
Second?
Motion, a second to approve December twenty-first meeting synopsis. Discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Next, January eighteenth, Commissioner McGovern was not present. Commissioner Cookton?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the draft Planning Commission meeting synopsis from January eighteenth, 2024, as presented.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the January eighteenth meeting synopsis. Further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
All right, that passes. Finally, we have February first, Commissioner, I was not here, as was not Commissioner McGovern and Commissioner Issa.
I move to approve the draft Planning Commission meeting synopsis from February first, 2024.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the February first meeting synopsis. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Thus brings us to item four, which is our regular Planning Commission policy and issue update, and the planning manager has some, a lot of information for us.
Yes, Chair Roman, Commissioners, next meeting in two weeks, March twenty-first. We have three items on that agenda. Public hearing for a privately initiated city code amendment, this one related to trash facilities in industrial zoning districts. Secondly, public hearing for rezoning at Ninety-Fourth and Lyndale, one you had talked about in the study meeting earlier. And then third, we have a study item for a resolution, housing as a human right. Then looking four weeks out, at April fourth, five items on that agenda. We have a public hearing for building modifications and addition at Seventy-Eight Forty Computer Avenue, and that comes with a plat as well. Secondly, a public hearing for a new park building at Bryant Park. Third, a public hearing for flexibility essentially on, at Fifty-Six-Hundred American Boulevard West, it's for a sunshade. And then fourth, a public hearing on plat to subdivide property at Sixty-Seven-O-One West Seventy-Eight Street. That's the enclave development you recently approved, so this is the plat coming back for that. And then finally, a study item for review of the tax increment financing for compliance with the comprehensive plan at Seven Hundred American Boulevard West. So that's what we have on upcoming agendas. Secondly, I want to introduce a new staff member. Dakota Crowe, Crowe is here, and Dakota is joining us from the city of Coon Rapids. He will be a planner, a current planner, focused on development review. Dakota has a master's degree in urban planning from the University of Minnesota.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome to the city.
Yeah, thanks. Looking forward to working with you all, so, thanks.
Anything else for, anything else that anyone would like to bring up at this time? Nope. All right, seeing none, we are adjourned until March twenty-first.